We'll wait until ten o'clock, members.
Okay, members. Thank you for your patience. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the County Council meeting taking place on Wednesday, the twenty sixth of January, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, can I ask everyone in the hall to switch off or make silence their mobile phones, please? Colleagues, members, we were saddened to hear of the passing of councillor Mark Idwall-Roberts earlier this month. Mark was elected to the council in May two thousand and twenty-one and he represented the West Auckland Electoral Division. In a relatively short period of time following his election, Mark's vision, passion and commitment to his community became immediately obvious. He was a thoroughly likeable, respectful gentleman who will be sorely missed by his family, friends and colleagues. Members, it was also with great sadness that I have to announce the passing of former Sedgfield Borough councillor and Great Acliff Town Councillor and once town mayor Barbara Clare, wife of former County Councillor John Clare. Barbara was deeply passionate about her local community and was involved in many local organisations, encompassing mental health and citizens' advice. Barbara's contributions to Acliff were significant and she will be very much missed by her family, friends and colleagues. Members, colleagues, can I ask you to stand for a minute's silence for Mark and Barbara? Thank you, members. Before we move on to the business on the agenda, I would just like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. You will note that measures are once again in place for social distancing and one-way system is in operation. If you need to leave the main hall at any point, please do so following the one-way system as you leave and re-enter the room. You must wear a face mask if you need to move around the hall. However, I would ask you to limit your movements around the hall as much as possible during the meeting. You can remove your face mask when you are seated. The external doors will be open periodically to provide ventilation. Any requests to speak must be made using your voting handset. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise it in the air and a member of the committee services team will assist you. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and wait until one of the microphone operators is in the proximity. The microphones are being wiped down after each use. Please be patient as the staff do their best to coordinate these arrangements. Before I will move on to today's business details on the agenda, I would also like to welcome to the meeting members of the public. You are very welcome to attend and observe the proceedings. However, I request politely that you do not disrupt the meeting. Can we move on to item one, members? The presentation to honorary aldermen and honorary older women. Colleagues, at the extraordinary meeting of the council held in December, you unanimously agreed to confirm the title Honourable Alderman and Honourable Older Woman status to former councillors in recognition of their eminent service. Collectively, between the fifteen councillors, they achieved a staggering three hundred and fifty-four years of service. Members will be aware that another seven councillors who left the council in May, who would have qualified for the status of Honorary Alderman or Honorary Older Woman, however, they had previously been awarded the title by one of their former borough or district councils. It now gives me great pleasure to invite some of the new recipients to collect a certificate of confirmation. I will call each recipient one by one to come and collect their certificate. Member, thanks, Michael. I'd like to call you by your posh name, Edward. Edward Bell! Derek Hicks. Eunice Huntington. Sarah Everston. Ozzy Johnson. John Lethbridge. Owen Temple. John Turnbull. Colleagues, once again, thanks for your service and for representing the council of your communities. Can we show our appreciation, members? Can we all stand and give them an applause, please? Thank you, members, for that. Colleagues, item two, the minutes. Can I have a mover of the minutes, please? A second, please. Does the council agree the minutes as a correct record? Thank you, members. Can we move to item three, declarations of interest? Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on this agenda? Thank you, members. Can we move to item four, the chair's announcements? Many of my recent events have been curtailed due to the ongoing pandemic. However, I was able to attend the County Durham Together Awards, which took place on December the ninth. This was a chance to celebrate some of the incredible individuals and outstanding organisations that make Durham an extraordinary county, and was enjoyed by the inspirational nominees and award supporters and sponsors. I would also like to extend my congratulations to everyone from County Durham who were recognised in the Queen's New Year's honours, which include Darren McMonroon, one of the driving forces in the established Packed House at Stanley, who was awarded an MBE for voluntary service to young people in Stanley; to Alan Gibson, a retired firefighter from Burn Hope, County Durham, who dedicated much of his life to the working alongside charities to raise vital funds. I'm sure many of you will know both Darren and Alan, who both thoroughly deserve their recognition. Well done to the two of them. Thank you, members. Can we move to item five, the leaders' report? Can I invite the deputy leader of the council if he wishes to speak? It's coming.
Thank you, Chair. I was alert this morning on the drive into Spendmew that the leader of the council, councillor Hopgood, has tested positive for Covid. I know that's the case with a number of members who aren't here today. I haven't seen the leaders' report, so therefore I am not in a position to read it out and certainly not answer questions on it. Councillor Marshall has offered to substitute as an alternative leaders' report, but I regret I've had to decline his kind offer of support on this occasion. So, Chair, with that, there will be no leaders' report today. I'm sure the whole council extends our best wishes to the leader and indeed all those councillors who are off work today due to Covid. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions on the report written? Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you, members. Item number six is questions from the public. One question has been received for today's meeting. I will now hand over to the deputy monitoring officer to explain the procedure.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. One question has been received from Mr Anderson, who was unfortunately not able to attend today's meeting. A written response will therefore be provided. The question and response will appear in the minutes and on the council's website. Thank you, Chair.
Can I move on to item seven, petitions? One petition has been received for today's meeting. Can I ask the deputy monitoring officer to explain the procedure?
Thank you, Chair. There's a period of five minutes for petitioners to present their petition to council. Once the presentation is finished, there should be no debate or questions on, and the petition shall be submitted to the relevant service for a response. Thank you.
Can I now invite the petition organiser, councillor Stacey Denali, to present her petition?
Many people from disadvantaged rural areas across County Durham have been faced with significant problems due to the cuts in bus services. Within the most rural areas of County Durham, some bus routes have been completely cancelled and residents are now having to find alternative ways of travelling to work, to health appointments and to educational settings. And in some cases, people have lost their jobs due to not being able to get there on time. This is happening in many areas where there are high levels of disadvantaged and low-wage families. Since the cuts to services, I have received case after case from families across the county explaining their situation and pleading with me to do something to help them. One parent expressed how she had hit financial difficulty as she had no longer had a bus service that would enable her to get her children to school on time. She had to make the choice between her children being an hour late for school or having to pay the expense of a taxi every morning in order to get them there. A difficult choice when you have to choose between your children having their entitlement to education or being able to afford to buy food and pay bills. Another person expressed how they had to get a taxi to the next village every morning in order to be able to catch a bus to get to work on time. The expense of the taxi meant that they were left short every month and found that attending work was starting to be more expensive than the amount that they were earning. Every person should be able to easily access vital services in order to meet their basic needs and human rights. Public transport plays an important part in ensuring that communities remain connected. No community should be left behind. By cancelling these services, communities are being let down and left behind. Where is the levelling up for our rural communities? We face a climate emergency, and yet those people who live in disadvantaged rural areas are forced to either use taxi services or struggle to afford to run a car, both of which increase the amount of pollution from our roads. Alongside this, we find that we face a digital switchover, that government plans to turn off copper wiring to houses in two thousand and twenty-five, only three years away. Add this to the situation with the lack of bus services and you will find that our rural communities will be further isolated and at greater disadvantage. Over the past two years, we have seen how important the internet is for both work and for education. We also know that many workplaces are currently offering a work-from-home option. Where will our residents of rural communities be in three years' time when they cannot get to a workplace? What will happen when they are unable to access the internet to be able to work from home? What will happen when they are unable to access the benefits system as they have no means of accessing their online journal? I will tell you where this will end, with many more families in County Durham forced into poverty, many more people isolated and many more people with poor mental and physical health. There must be a solution. This is why residents of County Durham have signed this petition, to ask that the council carry out a review of any subsidies made by the council to private bus companies to ensure that they are utilised effectively, so that the most disadvantaged rural areas of County Durham have key services that support residents in accessing work, health appointments and education. It asks that, as a council, we not only carry out a review but write to the government to petition them to fully fund bus services in order to support residents in accessing work and education. As a council, we also need to analyse the effect of the cut to bus services alongside the proposed digital switchover for two thousand and twenty-five and enable the council to plan for the future to ensure no rural part of County Durham becomes further isolated and at further disadvantage. This is why I now present this petition to the chairman of the council. Thank you.
Can I thank councillor Denali for presenting her petition to the council? Can we move on to item number eight, report of the cabinet? Can I ask the deputy leader of the council to present the report, please?
Chair, I move the report as tabled on pages nineteen to twenty-six.
Members, no questions have been submitted for the report. Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you, members. Can we move to item nine, review of the council's hackney carriage and private hire licensing policy? Members, can I pass you over to our legal office to tell you about what's happened on this report?
Chair, this report has been deferred at the request of the relevant portfolio holder.
Okay, members. Item number ten, the draft revised local code of corporate governance. Can I ask the corporate director of resources to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. This report provides members with a copy of the updated local code of corporate governance as approved by the audit committee on the twenty-ninth of November last year. The local code of corporate governance sets out how the council fulfils its requirements in terms of delivering good governance in local government and how it discharges statutory responsibilities and duties with regards to ensure it has the proper arrangements in place to governance of its affairs. The document and the underpinning policies and strategies and the arrangements that it refers to are reviewed on an annual basis by our external auditors as part of by our external auditors as part of the review of our annual governance statement. The updated code is attached to this report at Appendix Two and is structured around the key governance principles of behaving with integrity, demonstrating strong commitment to ethical values and respecting the rule of law, acting in the public interest, defining and delivering outcomes, ensuring openness and transparency, comprehensive stakeholder engagement, managing risks and performance and ensuring we have the capacity, capability and leadership to deliver as a Council. There have been no amendments to the statutory or best practice guidance that need to be addressed in the review this year, and the amendments to the code are largely superficial and relate to bringing it up to date in terms of linkages to new strategies and policy statements. All of the amendments that were made to the code were reviewed by the Audit Committee in November prior to its approval. The recommendations which are for Council to receive and note the updated Local Code of Corporate Governance are set out at paragraph six, Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a mover, please?
Thank you, Chair. Can I thank the officers for bringing this report forward and also thank all members of the Audit Committee for their oversight and review of the updated Local Code of Corporate Governance? The code is an important document. It sets out how we as a Council comply with the principles of good governance, how we organise our decision-making and processes to ensure that we act in the public interest at all times, how we ensure our decision-making is underpinned by robust risk assessments and how we ensure that decision-making is transparent and accountable. It is a statutory requirement for the Council to adopt one and for it to be reviewed and kept up to date on an annual basis. This report therefore helps maintain our compliance with those statutory requirements, something that our external auditors review on an annual basis. The updated code as appended to this report has been reviewed and agreed by the Audit Committee, and on that basis, I am happy to move that we note and agree the recommendations as set out at paragraph six of the report. Thank you, Chair.
Can I have a second, please?
Thank you, Chair. Like councillor Bell, can I also thank the officers for bringing this report forward? As well as many thanks to the members of the Audit Committee for their review of the updated Local Code of Corporate Governance. I would encourage all members to read the Local Code of Corporate Governance, which is appended to the report. It is a good read, and I'm sure members will take comfort from the arrangements in place which clearly demonstrate our compliance with all the necessary statutory requirements. The updated code has already been subject to review by the Audit Committee, who we charge with the oversight of these matters. I'm therefore more than happy to second the report and ask members to agree the recommendations as set out in paragraph six. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the Council to agree to receive the updated Local Code of Corporate Governance? Thank you, members. Can I move on now to item 11, Members' Allowance Scheme 2022 to 2023? Can I invite the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report, please?
Yes, Chair, thank you, Chair. This report sets out the findings and recommendations of the Independent Remuneration Panel, who undertake an annual review of the Members' Allowance Scheme. The proposals in this report relate to the scheme that will apply next financial year, and it's a statutory requirement for the Council to have a scheme which sets out the details of the allowances and expenses paid to members in fulfilling their roles. The current schemes remained unchanged since 2014/15, when the mileage rate paid was reduced to £45 per mile, and no other changes have been made since, and the current Members' Allowances have remained unchanged since 2010. The scheme needs to be reviewed on an annual basis, and in considering any changes, Council are required to have regard to any recommendations made by the Independent Remuneration Panel, though Council are not bound by its recommendations or are free to make its own decisions, as evidenced by the fact that on three separate occasions since 2010, the Independent Remuneration Panel have made recommendations to increase the basic allowance, the most recent being last year. Members may recall that in agreeing not to increase the basic allowances in the current year, Council asked the Head of Legal and Democratic Services to write to the Secretary of State to request that the arrangements for reviewing Members' Allowances are reviewed with a suggestion put forward that the arrangements in England are brought in line with Wales and Scotland. And a copy of that letter and the response we received is appended to the report for information. Members will see that in paragraphs 13 to 19, we've set out the considerations and recommendations of the Independent Remuneration Panel, who met in November of last year and, following a majority decision, resolved to recommend to Council that you give consideration to an increase of 2% in the basic allowance next year for the reasons that are outlined in paragraph 19. One further change to the scheme, supported by the Independent Remuneration Panel and by the Constitutional Working Group, relates to how the group leaders' allowances are referenced and referred to in the annex to the scheme. The amounts referenced for each group leader have not been updated in the published scheme since the election last year, and whilst the calculations and values are to remain the same, rather than updating and amending the Constitution every time there's a change in groups that is proposed, the amounts paid to individual group leaders, as referenced in the annex, are removed. The scheme appended to this report does not factor in any increase in any of the allowances at this stage, pending Council consideration of the Independent Remuneration Panel's recommendations. Should Council be minded to support the Independent Remuneration Panel's recommendations, then the allowances quoted will be updated before the scheme is published. Just for Members' reference, a 2% uplift in the basic allowance would equate to £216 annual increase for all members and incur costs of around £34,000. The recommendation, Chair, is set out at paragraph five to the report.
Thank you. Could I have a member to move a recommendation, please?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to thank the Independent Remuneration Panel for their review of the Members' Allowance Scheme and for their considered and independent proposals, which take into account a range of factors, as detailed by the Corporate Director. Before dealing with the substantive issue of the IRP's recommendations, I wish to move the recommendation on amendments to the annex in terms of payments to group leaders, as outlined at paragraph 5.2 of the report on page 432.
Is there a second, eh? Does anyone wish to speak on this report? Can you stand up, Colleen?
Chair, it's more of a point of order, really. I'm just checking at this stage, we're just talking about that particular annex within the report to remove that. And I'm just seeking some clarity, really, from the officer team around the rationale and the logic from not publishing in this report the allowances to the individual group leaders. What will the implications of that be for Council going forward about those not being included in this public document?
Right, thanks for the question, councillor Marshall. We're not proposing to remove how much is paid to the group leaders, it's just the list in the annex of the individual group structures that exist within the Council, because we had a situation where the scheme as published, the changes in the groups following the election went, we'd have to bring the scheme back to Council before we amended it. So it's not publishing that group leaders receive those payments in line with those calculations, it's just listing the individual group structures within the annex of the scheme that we're proposing to remove from the annex. Because the group structure changes and can change from time to time, that's the proposal.
No reply? Just one second.
Chair, I just wanted to check, Paul, so does that mean that the Constitution will be updated to reflect the future workings of the Council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Quinn?
Thanks, Chair. I come from a working-class background. My wife is a key worker, who, like many of the residents in my ward, have worked tirelessly over the pandemic. It's places like Ferry Hill that have kept this country going throughout these tough times. I, for one, will be doing what I think is right and not voting in favour of the pay rise. £33,516 is a lot of money where I come from, and that is the minimum cost of this pay rise per year to the taxpayer of County Durham. I believe the money is better spent within the community and not directly into someone's pocket. We in the Joint Administration believe in saving costs in the most efficient way possible with the least amount of consequences to the public. I never got into this job for the money. For me, the rewarding part of this role is tackling the issues within the community, listening to the people of Ferry Hill and, most importantly, representing the people that put me in this position today. Can I carry on?
Colleen, a minute.
Thanks, Chair.
Go on, member. One second. Yes, you go. I'm not waiting for the...
Thank you, Chair. I thought the process that we were going through was debating the first recommendations that councillor Bell moved and that were seconded, and then this debate on the actual allowances and how they would be set would be part of the second one, and that's my point of order, Chair.
Yes.
Chair, if I could, through you, I think, as councillor Marshall quite rightly says, he did raise that, and councillor Bell did answer that. But for the benefit of all members in the room, the procedure is going to be as councillor Marshall has outlined. So we'll deal with the technical amendment first, and then there will be a debate on the substantive item of the IRP's recommendations after this recommendation has been agreed or disagreed, as the case may be.
Once again, I'll hand over to the Deputy Monitoring Officer to explain the procedure.
Chair, if I could just clarify, there are still a few people in the queue, councillor Tinsley and councillor Joplin. If I could just confirm that they wish to speak on this part of the recommendation or whether they're happy to go to a vote on this part of the recommendation and save their right to speak until the substantive motion.
Does any member wants to speak on what James has just said? On this part of it?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. For us at Tinsley, Willington and Hungwick, just specifically relating to the annex, I'm sure everybody in this room believes in transparency, and I think there's a concern here that this may hinder transparency in terms of Members' Allowance Scheme. And just picking up from the officer's comments there, the reason behind this is that it means that we'll not have to come back to full council if there are changes in the group structure to alter the Members' Allowance Scheme. Just for clarity and for my information, could you let us know how many times those group structures have changed over, say, the last five years or so? And could you just describe how onerous a task that would be to come back to the next council meeting, just to make that update? I'm concerned that we may be using a hammer here to crack an egg, shall we say. Thanks.
I don't have that information to hand councillor Tinsley, but I can provide that after the meeting or as a postscript to the minutes if members would like that information.
Councillor Joplin? No, okay, right, fine. We'll go to the vote now. I'll pass over to James, who will tell you the process.
So again, just to clarify, this is only on the technical amendment to the annex. It'll be one to vote for the recommendation, sorry, two to vote against the recommendation and three to abstain. Now the voting's open.
Chair, through you, just for the benefit of all members, this is just the change in the table in the annex. This is not about any percentage uplift or otherwise to the basic allowance.
The vote is now closed, members. Members, the vote is as follows: four ninety-three against nine, abstentions five. Recommendation agreed. Can I now ask the Deputy Leader of the Council to continue?
Thank you, Chair. An apologies for that confusion. We'll try and do it more clearly next time. So we now turn to the substantive issue of the Independent Reference Panel's recommendation to increase allowances by 2% in 2022/23. It's disappointing that we are once again faced with these decisions. At Appendix Three, members will note that councillor Hennig wrote to the Secretary of State last year on behalf of all the group leaders, saying that we should not be involved in this process, as is the case in Wales, Scotland and Northern Ireland. And at Appendix Four, the ministry replied that this is the system and that we should have regard to the IRP recommendations following them unless there is a good reason not to. Many members may think that the current cost of living issue faced by our residents and other issues faced by the Council are such issues. That is why the Joint Administration, as agreed at the Constitutional Working Party, is not making a recommendation, leaving it to the judgement of every member. Issues like this should not be decided by group leaders, and it is time that members consider these issues for themselves as a free vote. I recognise that some people struggle with that concept. Some groups have a very top-down approach and whipping systems, and this makes it a very difficult con... very difficult concept for them to grasp. Perhaps that is why councillor Marshall has misrepresented this report and this vote in things like his Facebook posting last night, stating 'Coalition of Chaos Plans, Councillor Pay Rise'. This is a report of an independent remuneration panel, and it is very clearly states that. I do hope that members generally have read this report in detail. I see no real need to have a productive debate on this matter, and would suggest that we simply consider the reasoned recommendations put forward by the independent remuneration panel and move to a free vote on this issue. With that, Chair, I would like to move that we have a vote on whether to accept the IRP recommendations in terms of an increase in members' basic allowances of two percent next year. Thank you, Chair.
Do I have a second for this, please? Second. Do anyone wish to speak? Councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair. Could I pass on my thanks to the independent panel members, who certainly since my time on this unitary council have came back with recommendations every year. I think, sort of, that said, and I agree with councillor Bell, where as politicians we shouldn't be expected at all to be discussing allowances that are paid to us if ever there was a conflict of interest, I think that is. From my point of view, you know, and from the Labour Group's point of view, it's absolutely scandalous that we can be sitting here looking at anything like a two percent increase in allowances. You know, the Labour Group and this council have shown strong leadership year on year since they were running this council to make sure that we led from the front and we kick back on any increase in members' allowances. And I think that's important. This isn't a group decision that we make within the Labour Group where members are whipped. In fact, we are all unanimous in our views as individuals, as part of that group, that it is unacceptable. You know, we've had a public sector pay freeze, we've had residents across County Durham where they face spending cuts in our council of quarter of a billion pounds, we've had job losses, you know, it's been a horrendous ten years for residents who now find themselves facing a cost of living crisis, and many on a financial cliff edge as we approach the things that we're going to discuss in the motion shortly. So I think it's scandalous that anybody isn't putting the head above the parapet and saying outright that we shouldn't be accepting, that we should be rejecting the views of the panel, we shouldn't be having a pay increase. I think it's in the best interest of all residents in the county that we, as politicians, we lead from the front and we try and set an example, unlike some of the politicians nationally, to try and rebuild some trust and confidence in politicians across the board. So the Labour Group will be kicking this out. We don't want to see a pay increase for councillors, we think it's unfair, unjust, it goes against the green with the staff, and the troubles that our communities are going to be facing. And we should be concentrating on looking at how we can minimise increases in council tax and providing the best quality support and services with the difficulties that they are all facing as we move forward. Thank you, Chair. So, sorry, Chair, I'd like to formally move that we do not accept the recommendations of the panel, and formally accept that we accept no pay increase at all for our members this year.
Thank you. Second for that, please? Okay. Councillor Wilkes?
Yes, thank you, members. Chair, just as councillor Marshall has moved an amendment, and that's been seconded by councillor Crute, the debate will now move on to an amendment as to whether we should, the council should adopt a zero percent increase on the members' allowance.
Councillor Wilkes?
Thank you, Chair. Colleagues, I had no intention of speaking on this item, I was simply just going to vote against the recommendations. And then I was shown the online comments by the leader of the Labour Group last night. I genuinely think it's unacceptable for members of this council to insult independent panel members by calling their reports scandalous, and to lie to the public about how this report is determined. And whilst he continues to behave in this manner, councillor Marshall, in my view, does a disservice to his party's residents, this council and himself. He's even undermined his own deputy, who agreed to accept this report being tabled and to a free vote on it, as has happened for the last twelve years. Colleagues, it's this kind of behaviour which damages the public perception of local politics and has no place in our county. The Joint Administration stands above this immature behaviour, as I am absolutely certain of the vast majority of Labour members. I will also be voting against this pay rise, Chair.
Councillor McKeon?
Thank you very much, Chair. As I'm sure everyone here has a similar story to tell to me, a lot of my residents are really suffering at the moment. I helped to run the community pantry in Coxell. We're not just seeing an increase in volume of people coming, but we're seeing a massive increase of need, and I just think it's quite teneered for a leader of any group to move that we accept the recommendations of this report, given what the people that we represent are going through currently. I've been on this council for, well, not twelve years, I've been on a few years. From what I can remember, Labour have always voted down pay increases such as this because we're still living through a Tory and Lib Dem imposed austerity against local government in the North East. And I'm going to bear this free vote in mind as we go forward, thinking of all of the items we've voted on in the past few months as a council. I don't believe that members of the coalition were given a free vote on any of those, and thinking ahead to some of the more difficult decisions that our council's going to have to make around the budget, around austerity, I'm going to bear in mind this free vote, because if this is an issue of conscience for members of the Tory group, then I wonder what those are going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hovells?
Thank you, Chairman. This actually puts a sour taste in my mouth, and I think it will also do the same for the residents. Throughout the last few years, we've seen people, families within our community struggling, not only for food, what I see on the television this morning, even for a bed to lie on, and yet we're sitting here discussing this, I find very distasteful. I will not be supporting this report, and I think it's absolutely disgraceful that we discuss it at this moment in time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Quinn?
Thanks, Chair. Second time lucky, I hope. I come from a working class background. My wife is a key worker, who, like many of the residents in my ward, have worked tirelessly over the pandemic. It's places like Ferry Hill that have kept this country going throughout these tough times. I for one will be doing what I think is right and not voting in favour of a pay rise. Thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixteen pounds is a lot of money where I come from, and that is the minimum cost of this pay rise per year to the taxpayer of County Durham. I believe this money is better well spent within the community and not directly into someone's pocket. We in the Joint Administration believe in saving costs in the most efficient way possible with the least consequence to the public. I never got into this job for the money. For me, the rewarding part of this role is tackling issues within the community, listening to the people of Ferry Hill, and most importantly, representing the people that put me into this position. For me, that's worth more than any pay rise. Therefore, I will be voting against the pay rise, and I hope my fellow councillors will do the same. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Howie?
Thank you. Being a single mum of four children on my own and widowed, I have struggled this last few years. I've taken on this job for the love of wanting to help people, not for the money, so I will not be voting for a pay rise, as is assumed by the Labour Party that we will be. We are always given a free rein to vote how we want to in all our decisions that we make. We maybe discuss it with each other, but we're never told how to vote on block, like we've read about in the papers just recently with other parties. We do look at recommendations that are sent to us from independent parties, we do go through them, and I believe as a democracy, we have every right to have a vote as a person and not be told how to vote. That's what we do in a democratic world. So I do it for the love and wanting to help people, not for the money, and I will be voting against any pay rise.
Councillor Wilson?
Simon Wilson, Satterton Ward. To be perfectly honest, I understand the difficulty that the independent body are put under in that they're requested to do this. However, I do think it is not correct for us to accept any pay rise this year, the people over the last two years who've been needing to use food banks, who've been left in perilous employment situations. I don't know if, yeah, many people have seen this as well, but it seems as though issues around housing are flying up at the minute as well. The fact of the matter that we take any of this would be, I think, a massive disservice to the county, and I won't be voting to get a pay rise, I'll be voting with the amendment.
Councillor McDonald?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate we have a process when it comes to motions for the council. However, the purpose of an amendment is surely to change the outcome of the substantive motion. The amendment that's been proposed by councillor Marshall will actually have the same outcome. People either want the pay rise, or they don't want the pay rise. And for further information, I won't be voting for it either. Thank you.
Councillor Joplin? No, just one second.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask that we go straight to the vote. There is no acrimony over this. There is full agreement in this chamber that we are not going to vote for this pay rise. So I don't think we need an hour of political speech from the opposition just so they can get their views on YouTube and spread their poison.
Okay. Second for that, please? Second that?
Chair, from the constitutional point of view, I understand that amendments can only be put forward if they're put in writing. I know there's a lot of confusion going around the room at the minute about what we're voting on and how it's going. Can I just ask and request, Chair, if it would be possible if we can just have a single vote on whether a, we're for the two percent increase, or whether we're against any kind of increase zero percent? So in moving the amendment and seeking clarity, as stated, I don't believe we're following the constitution here, as no amendment has been put to you in writing.
Chair, there's no absolute requirement to have an amendment put in writing. You may require that amendment be put in writing, but it is not an absolute requirement. The purpose of the amendment is, does not negate the amendment put by councillor Bell. The council must adopt a members' remuneration scheme. The motion put forward by councillor Bell was for a two percent rise in the basic allowance as recommended by the IRP. To vote against that would not therefore adopt a remuneration scheme, it would just simply reject a two percent pay rise. Therefore, the amendment put forward by councillor Marshall is to adopt the members' remuneration scheme with no rise. So there is a very technical difference, but it is a very important distinction.
Point of order, Chair. I must correct the deputy monitoring officer in what he said there. I did not move a recommendation to accept the IRP panel's recommendation. I conspicuously said that I made no recommendation that we move to a free vote. Had members actually just listened to that, that would have wound up in a vote as one for, two against, or three abstain, and would have been voting by now. But I must correct that for the minute, I conspicuously did not recommend that we accept the two percent recommendation of the IRP, I recommended that we have a free vote. Thank you, Chair.
I think we've discussed this quite enough, so before we have the vote, councillor Bell, you have the right to speak. One second.
It's the mover of the original motion who has the right of reply on any, before any amendment is voted on. No.
Thank you, Chair. My observer, it might be helpful if the mic stood more towards the front rather than the side, given where most of the speakers come from, save a bit of time. I have nothing to add. I mean, if members would just listen to what is said and read reports diligently, they heard me say, I make no recommendation. The amendment has now been moved, so it is, I'm sure the monitoring officer will confirm this, you vote for the amendment to reject the recommended increase, you vote against the amendment to accept the recommended increase, or you abstain. I presume those are the choices, and would just ask the monitoring officer to confirm those choices. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We'll now go to the vote, but I'll pass over to the officer to explain exactly how the voting will be carried out.
Thank you, Chair, and I will obviously be willing to accept any clarifications, because I appreciate this is a confusing matter before members this morning. But we are now taking on a vote on the amendment as proposed by councillor Marshall, which is to adopt the members' remuneration scheme with a zero percent increase in the basic allowance. If you wish to adopt that particular amendment, vote one; if you wish to vote against that amendment, vote two, and press three to abstain. Councillor? Yeah, Chair, quite right, there is members on both sides of the floor which requested the named vote, so this will be a named vote.
Will be a named vote.
The names of each member and the way that each member voted will appear in the minutes. Thank you. And the vote is open.
Members, the vote is now closed. Members, the vote. Four, 102. Against, zero. Abstentions, five. The amendment is carried. Thank you. Councillor Martin. Finished? Councillor Malloy.
Thank you, Chair. But I'd actually pressed before we went on to the vote, so no need to speak now, cheers.
councillor Atkinson. Councillor Atkinson. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. I'm not going to speak now, I've seen the vote. You were obviously going to reject it and so the people are for real and other constituents and other towns in County Durham will be happy about that. Thank you.
councillor Mulholland, do you still want to speak or not? Councillor?
No, no, again, pressed that just before the vote and pleased to see the council's done the right thing.
Okay. Councillor Bell. No, okay. There's no one else in the queue, is there? Who hasn't been asked to vote? Okay. You have the right reply. Councillor Marshall.
Chair, just very briefly, because we've got two really important motions to discuss next, I just want to thank all members for the support of our amendment and, you know, I look forward to working closely with people in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring the deputy monitoring officer to explain the next part of the voting.
Thank you, Chair. Now that the amendment has been adopted, it becomes a substantive motion. We do unfortunately need to have to have another vote on that. So it's one, if you wish to adopt the members' remuneration scheme with a 0% increase in the basic allowance, two, if you wish to vote against that, and three, if you wish to abstain. The vote is now open.
Remind you again, members. We'll remind you again.
Thank you, Chair. The vote is now open. Just a reminder, one, to adopt the members' remuneration scheme with a 0% increase in the basic allowance, two, to vote against that motion, three, to abstain.
Vote clause now, members. Members. Four, 103. Against, zero. Abstentions, three. The motion is carried. Can I move to item 12, members? Request for dispensation under section 85.1 of the Local Government Act 1972. Can I ask the corporate director of resources to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief with this one. The current legislation does not allow hybrid or virtual meetings to take place and requires members to attend formal meetings in person to conduct council business. The legislation also states that where a member fails to attend a meeting over a period of six months, then, subject to certain exemptions, they cease to become a member. This report asks members to agree an exemption to those rules where the failure to attend is COVID-related, recognising that some members' ability to attend meetings in person may be inhibited due to medical or self-isolation requirements. It's proposed that this dispensation is put in place up till the 31st of December this year. Chair, as I would be brief, the recommendations are set out at paragraph three.
Thank you. Can I have a mover, please?
Thank you, Chair. Move the report. The principal advantage of doing this is that any member whose absence is COVID-related will automatically be able to be granted a dispensation as to having to come to council specially with new members to give them dispensation. So it's a matter of convenience and given the numbers of members absent today because of COVID-related issues, seems eminently sensible. So with that, Chair, move the report as tabled.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please? Can you put the back? Here.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair, and can I thank Paul for his report? Yeah, it's disappointing that we haven't got the legal powers to hold hybrid meetings and as Richard has already outlined, there are consequences when people can't attend meetings through ill health. I've been there myself. It's taken me many months to get over COVID and other people will be suffering the same and I don't think they should be removed as a consequence of them being ill. So I fully endorse this and second it, Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on the report? Member? Behind you.
Yes, Chair. While I accept the gist of what's been said here and I wholeheartedly support giving members a dispensation should they fall foul of COVID and be laid low, so to speak, at the six-month period, but I'm a bit disappointed that we're not including other illnesses. What about somebody who, say, has cancer? You know, what about somebody who has a mental health problem? Why, why are we just focusing on COVID? Surely it's done on a case-by-case basis, therefore you do not need to specifically name one illness unless you're going to name all the illnesses. So can I have clarification? Why COVID? What happens if, God forbid, I get cancer and I can't come to meetings?
Chair. Yes, Chair.
Chair, the legislation does provide for those circumstances already on a case-by-case basis. The proposals being put to council is because of the pandemic and the generic nature of the illness that can affect many, many members. But we do already exercise those dispensations in circumstances such as you've just outlined there, so it wouldn't preclude that. This is just a general policy for the council to adopt, given the pandemic nature of COVID.
Anyone else wish to speak? If not, can I ask the council to agree that an automatic dispensation under section 85.1 of the Local Government Act 1972 is given to all councillors up to and including the 31st of December 2022 if abstinence are COVID-related? Agreed, members? Thank you. Can we move to item 13? Overview and scrutiny, six monthly report. Can I invite the Chair of Overview and Scrutiny to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'm very pleased to present to the council the first overview and scrutiny update which sets out some of the activity we have undertaken in the past six months. It has been a very busy period. I was honoured to be appointed Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board in May last year with the support of my vice-chair, councillor Chris Lines. We have welcomed new scrutiny members and new chairs and vice-chairs of our committees in the past six months. We are taking a refreshed approach to scrutiny work by encouraging inclusiveness and transparency. We are developing our input into policy development and working hard to ensure scrutiny is effective. We continue to implement the scrutiny process in accordance with the four principles of effective scrutiny: to provide a constructive, critical friend challenge; to amplify the voices and concerns of the public; to be led by independent-minded people who take responsibility for their role; to drive improvement in public services. Much of our work has featured the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on service delivery and, most recently, understanding service restoration and recovery. I would like to give you some brief examples of the work we have covered so far. My own committee, the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, has contributed to Cabinet's review on options for the DLI museum, art gallery building and surrounding grounds. We held a lively meeting and the outcomes have formed part of the evidence for the review by Cabinet. The board have contributed to the budget process through consideration and scrutiny of the MTFP. In these times of financial challenges, uncertainty for local government funding and increasing budgetary pressures, this is significant and important role for scrutiny. Children and young people chaired by councillor Chris Hood with councillor James Coslett scrutinised the development of a new SEND strategy, considered the key findings following the focused Ofsted inspection in 2021, and received an update on child and adolescent mental health services. Economy and Enterprise chaired by councillor Bill Moist with councillor Andrew Jackson has received a presentation from Visit County Durham looking at the visitor economy. The committee has been updated on new master plans to support potential levelling up fund bids and examined the approach to developing key strategic employment sites in the county. The Environment and Sustainable Communities Committee chaired by councillor Bev Colt and councillor Jonathan Elmer has considered the latest climate emergency response plan and continues to monitor the Single Use Plastics Action Plan. The committee has begun work on looking at the evidence base to determine if there is a need to declare an ecological emergency in the county to feed into future decisions Cabinet will make. Adults and Wellbeing and Health led by Patricia Joplin with councillor Rochelle Charlton-Lane has considered proposals to review services provided at Shotley Bridge Community Hospital, examined plans across the health and social care system for both surge and cold weather activity on admissions in 2021, and also reviewed progress against recommendations made by previous scrutiny review in the GP services in County Durham. Safer and Stronger Communities chaired by Joyce Charlton and councillor Brian Avery has considered presentations on arson and deliberate fire setting, received an overview of the Domestic Abuse Act 2021, and have taken part in focused briefing sessions on substance abuse and antisocial behaviour. It's also worth noting that Brian is an absolute massive loss to our team of chairs and vice-chairs. They demonstrated a real passion for raising issues that concern their residents and pushing for improvements through their scrutiny committee. Chair, this update gives you a flavour of the work we have been involved in so far, which I now present to you. I'd like to add my thanks to the officers that support our work, for the chairs and vice-chairs leading on the work programmes they formulate. Most importantly, I want to thank all of the members that take part in these committees, providing constructive feedback in turn and holding the executive to account. We've had some really good debates and discussions and long may it continue. I ask members to accept this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the report? Can I ask the council to note the six monthly update? Thank you. Can we now move to item number 14? Motions on notice. There are two motions for consideration. The motions will be dealt with in the order in which they were received and detailed on the agenda. Councillor Crute, could you? Hang on. Sorry, Rith. I will hand over to the deputy monitoring officer to explain the procedure. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Chair. As is usual, movers of motions have five minutes to speak and everybody else will be entitled to three minutes. The mover of the motion shall be entitled to a three-minute right of reply at the end of the debate and she'll be the only person entitled to speak more than once. If any amendments are moved and seconded, council will debate whether or not to adopt that amendment. In any debate on an amendment, everyone is entitled to speak, other than the mover of the original amendment, who shall be afforded a right of reply at the end of the debate. If, following a vote, the amendment is adopted, it becomes the substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate returns to the original motion as set out in the agenda. Thank you, Chair.
And the second motion is from councillor Gunn. Councillor Crute, can you now move your motion, please?
Thank you, Chairman. This coming springtime, in just a few short weeks' time, if they're not addressed beforehand, a number of factors combined are going to lead to the hardest squeeze on household budgets in a generation, leading to a cost of living crisis for ordinary working people and families in County Durham and across the UK. According to the Office for National Statistics, the value of wages in real terms is falling and people are about to be hit with a tax rise in the shape of increased national insurance contributions. At the same time, energy bills are about to thud onto our doormats and these will be grossly inflated by energy price cap changes that will increase energy bills by as much as 50% and which will almost certainly increase the number of households in fuel poverty from 4 million at the current time to as much as 6 million. from £4 million at the current time to as much as £6 million. In addition, universal credit clearments will continue to struggle to make ends meet as the government's decision last year to remove the £20 a week uplift will continue way to way with household budgets. And as if this wasn't enough, in the next few weeks, the rate of inflation is set to sort of its highest level in almost 30 years. As a result, Chairman, the Resolution Foundation has estimated that when all these factors come together, household costs will increase by an eye-watering £1,200 a year for each family. In the context of this additional hardship looming on the horizon, the people of County Durham are heading for a potentially catastrophic cost of living crisis, with many struggling families abandoned to the harsh choice of either eating or hating. That's the almost impossible quandary of whether to hate your house or put food on the table, and all of this in the 21st century in the fifth richest nation on earth. So in the hope of preventing this potential calamity, we call on the government today to put in place all measures necessary to mitigate the impact of this crisis on the people of County Durham and beyond. The list I've got here isn't intended to be exhaustive, but as an absolute minimum, the government must take measures now to remove the 5% VAT rate on household energy bills, reinstate the £20 uplift to universal credit payments, freeze the energy price cap to hold down energy bills and limit the risk of deepening an already entrenched fuel poverty crisis, scrap the tax rises scheduled to hit peer packets from April, make arrangements for council tax rebates for those who need them most, increase benefit payments from the 3.1% planned to 6% to help the hardest-hit households, and finally introduce a windfall tax on profit-rich North Sea oil and gas companies. And in addition, for the longer term, we urge the government to plan ahead now to wing customers off expensive and environmentally harmful fossil fuels by putting more funding into clean energy and home insulation projects. Chairman, this is a crisis made in Downing Street and it's typified by harsh policy decisions such as taking away £20 a week from struggling families on universal credit while at the same time increasing taxes, and by the way, that's breaking an election promise made two years ago not to raise taxes. The government must take measures immediately to mitigate the impact of this crisis on working people and hard-pressed families. So, Chairman, we've offered a way out. The rest is up to members this morning to support this motion and call on the government to finally get its act together, put its own self-inflicted crisis in chaos to one side for a moment and for once try to focus its energies on delivering a decent standard of living for our residents and at the same time alleviate the financial burden of this impending cost of living crisis. Chairman, I move the motion as printed on today's papers and on the screens at the front of the hall, and I urge every member in the room this morning to support the motion in its original form. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. This will require a seconded... Seconded?
I'm going to move the motion now. I'm going to say that I'm going to...
Sorry, councillor Serties, one second.
Chair, it's not possible for a second to also move a closure motion at the same time. A closure motion can only be moved at the end of a speech by another member.
Councillor Serties, you want to say something?
I'm going to second the motion or has somebody already done it because I didn't hear abruptly?
It's already been achieved by the member at the back of the...
Right, sorry, he wasn't using the mic. Can I just say thank you very much for the mic use? Thank you.
Okay. With that, councillor Sexton?
Can you hear me? Yeah. Chair, could I move a motion without notice then to go straight to the vote? I think everybody is all of the same mind to support this motion by councillor Crute.
It's councillor Bell registered to speak and it's another person to speak as well, so it's whether you think it's been seconded or not. It comes to you to whether you think it's been seconded. It's up to you. It's up to you. It's up to you to whether you think it's been seconded.
Councillor Crute, we'll go straight to the vote. You have the right to report. Not yet. We'll go straight to the vote.
Chair, the procedural motion, the closure motion, has been moved and seconded. We'll take the vote on that first, which is whether or not to end the debate at that point. If that vote is carried, councillor Crute will have a right to reply at that point and then there'll be a vote on the substantive motion. So it will be, one, to end the debate at that point, two, to continue the debate, three, to abstain.
Point of order from councillor Wilkes, what? Wait until the mic comes. There you go.
If I who seconded Paul Sexton's motion, please?
Paul wanted to go straight to the vote.
Okay. Can we have a second for Paul Sexton's motion? We've got two here. That's fine. We've got one here. Thank you for that, councillor Wilkes.
One, to vote to end the debate. Two, to vote to continue the debate. Three, to abstain. Thank you.
Members, the vote is as follows: four, 106 against zero, abstentions one. The motion is carried. Councillor Crute, you have the right to reply.
Chairman, in the spirit of the closure motion, I'm happy to go straight to the vote.
Thank you. I'll pass over again to the Deputy Monitoring Officer to explain the voting of this.
Thank you, Chair. So the vote is now on the motion as set out in the papers. One to vote for the motion, two to vote against the motion and three to abstain. Thank you. Chair, unfortunately, there's been a technical error with the vote, so we're going to have to rerun the vote, which we will do in a second and I'll inform members when it's reopened. The question will be the same. It'll be, one, to vote for the motion as set out in the papers, two to vote against and three to abstain, but I'll inform members when it's reopened.
Do you know who's done that the most this season? Rushford. Rushford. After 90 minutes.
Members, vote is as follows: four, 103 against zero, four abstentions. The motion is carried. Can I now move on to councillor Gunn? Councillor Gunn, can you move your motion, please?
I think what we've just seen is a first for this council in nine months, so in the interest of consistency, I would like to think that this continues with this motion. Can I just say as well, Chair, that this motion was sent in before the Prime Minister Boris He lifted Plan B, the restrictions around Plan B, including the wearing of face masks for secondary pupils. But this actually makes this motion even more important because it's a motion asking the Secretary of State for Education to keep our children and school staff safe and to keep schools open. I know that we're all very hopeful that the Omicron infection rate spread is in decline, but whilst hope and optimism is good, it's not an assurance. And we don't know whether another variant will arrive, although I've heard that there already is one. And if it does arrive, how it might impact on spread and on health. So in the meantime, Chair, we should all be doing everything we can to protect and make safety a priority for our schools. And I know that only 7,000 air filters have been made available for what's been estimated as 300,000 classrooms in England. for what's been estimated as 300,000 classrooms in England. In our case, just doing maths around that, that would likely be just air filters for six classrooms in 266 schools. Six classrooms in 266 schools. Now, I'm sure you all know of classrooms in your area that would benefit from one of these air filters. But you're not going to get one. And some of our classrooms in old buildings neglected by lack of Tory investment for the last 11 years are very poorly ventilated. And even classrooms with windows and doors wide open in this cold weather are showing CO2 levels well above the recommended level. I confess that I'm not a scientist, but there is growing evidence that air filters can, and they do, minimise the risk of infection spread. And I'm sure we would all agree that uncontaminated air should be a priority in our classrooms. Now, we know as well, we've said it in here before, that school staff have been working under immense pressure for almost two years with constant changes to their working lives in adapting and supporting young people in teaching and learning. And they've faced real challenges and I cannot thank them enough. I'm sure we would all agree that children need to be in school. We know all the arguments for that. But this shouldn't just be a statement, Chair. There has to be support to do it. And at the heart of this motion is the health of our school staff and the young people they teach and support. And finally, Chair, although this motion is about Covid spread now, investment in air purifiers will also improve our long-term preparedness to protect children and staff from future diseases. And it's not an overstatement to say that getting air quality and ventilation right in our schools could be the key to improving the future health and wellbeing of our children. I move, Chair.
Thank you. Motion need a second.
Thank you, Chair. Veronica Andrews, councillor for Burnham, Field and Dipton. I'd like to second councillor Gunn's motion and wholeheartedly support the introduction of air filtration systems into our schools for many reasons. Mainly helping schools to manage transmission and reducing disruption to face-to-face learning can only bring benefits to schools and colleges by keeping staff, pupils and families safe. Young people have been robbed of many months of education and have been isolated from the social aspects which being in school provides. This has a knock-on impact on mental wellbeing which may affect future learning. Teachers, education staff and parents have borne the brunt of this for the past two years and it's time some consideration was given to their work environment. This will effectively keep students and staff safe. We live in a county with very unpredictable weather and windows and cannot always be kept open to ventilate rooms and maintain a safe learning and teaching environment. By introducing air filtration in our education buildings, it would reduce the risk to children and staff alike and also reduce further transmission through our communities. It would future-proof schools if it's believed coronavirus is around for the long term and from any potential variants in the future. In conclusion, I've seen this article in The Guardian and it ended with, "England could fit an air purifier to every classroom for half the price of a new royal yacht", which scientists and campaigners here would significantly reduce the spread of Covid in schools. I believe this is where this government is letting down our children when it was wanting to rebuild the empire rather than rebuilding Britain. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the motion? No? Has anyone registered? No registered? Richard Bell, councillor Bell.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I wish to move an amendment, please, which hopefully Member Services have printed out. And I will speak to that once the print has been distributed.
Anyone else? Hand out amendments. Okay, members.
So I'm grateful to councillor Gunn for this motion. I certainly recognise her sincerity in bringing it. I think it's probably a little bit dated, given that The Guardian report's dated several weeks ago, back to early December. And obviously, as she's acknowledged, things have changed. Plan B restrictions are being lifted today and the Covid rate continues to fall in the county. I principally want to make some points just in terms of the position in regulations and advice. The Department for Education told school leaders by email in December, "In the very few cases where an area of poor ventilation has been identified and this cannot be resolved through opening windows and doors or minor repair works, it may be appropriate to consider the use of an air cleaning unit as an additional mitigation while further remedial work is undertaken to improve ventilation." However, it should be noted that they are not a substitute for ventilation and should never be used as a reason to reduce ventilation. In other words, the primary mechanism for dealing with air quality where you can is to open windows, not install them in every classroom. In terms of how many schools in County Durham have been affected by this, obviously, we're not in touch with the academies in terms of applications, but the Education Service did invite schools to get in touch with us if they needed support with ventilation issues relating to the need for air purification solutions. Fifteen schools came forward for support and we have given advice to these establishments, which would go on to make applications for the three units being distributed by the government. We've not had any feedback regarding the success of applications yet, though we understand that around four in five applications nationally are being accepted. The major protection against vaccination is about, against Covid-19, is vaccination. And we're doing well in County Durham in terms of vaccination of our schoolchildren. In the 16 to 17-year-old category, they've been eligible for a second dose since mid-October and 50% have had a second dose. Obviously, 12 to 15-year-olds more recently have become eligible and only 7% of them have had a second dose. And vaccination is not recommended for healthy 5 to 11-year-olds. We do, however, feel from talking to teachers that many would appreciate being given priority status alongside other frontline workers when it comes to top-up priority vaccinations and for any future vaccinations. And we believe that is a very important thing that the government can and should be doing, albeit that is a decision for the Committee on Vaccination, not a political decision by the Secretary of State. In terms of face masks, the guidance for people who may be more vulnerable to Covid-19 as a result of the underlying health conditions and for people who are pregnant does not specify that medical-grade masks should be used, although depending on the individual risk assessment as performed by the school, this may be a mitigation measure which is appropriate for some people. Schools have previously been provided with supplies of medical-grade face masks via the PPE cell. And if it's determined on an individual risk assessment basis that enhanced protection is indicated, then the school can order a supply of these via the PPE cell online portal. And these supplies are free. Clearly, it never was the plan to fit air filtration devices to every classroom in England and it would not be sensible to do so. The sensible approach is to fit air filtration devices to windowless classrooms, especially those where vulnerable children are taught. Compulsory mask-wearing in secondary schools ended last week, yet given the relatively high rate of Covid infections in County Durham, some heads wish to continue. Opinions differ about the value of mask-wearing by people-
One minute, member.
...versus the adverse effect on education as teachers cannot see whether pupils can understand or not. And we need to resolve this question of guidelines and mask-wearings with proper government guidelines, if this is possible. We value highly teachers and their work and that's why we would like to see them vaccinated earlier than the general population in future, given that children and young people are always going to be a major source of future infections. With that, Chair, I move the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, can I bring in the Deputy Monitoring Officer?
Thank you, Chair. The 30-minute time limit for motions under the Constitution is now expired. So unless a motion without notice to extend that time limit is moved at this point, we will move to the votes without any further debate.
Chair, I thought we might have had time to get through the business, you know, that unavoidable glitch in the IT equipment got in the way. With that in mind, could I request that we move, suspend the relevant item in the Constitution to allow for more time to discuss this motion, please?
A second for that. We'll have a one. Members, can that be agreed by? Agreed. A second for councillor Bell's amendment.
I'd like to second what the motion is that councillor Bell has brought before us this morning. Thank you.
Councillor Quinn.
Thank you, Chair. I did actually press before councillor Bell made his motion, but I want to speak on it anyway. I was notified as a foundation governor about one of the schools that I'm a governor at. They've got 44 cases of children on school absences. 26 of those are confirmed cases of Covid. There's six members of staff off. And the directive that they've had from county is to say, "As long as there is a schoolteacher in front of a class, the school must remain open." That is more than a quarter of the children off from that school and six members of staff in a very small school. I find it really alarming that we're allowing this to happen. And I understand, we need the children at school, we need their education, it is important. But we are putting these key workers, of which I am one, at risk every single day. And there are still people dying of Covid, whether they've had jabs or not. We need to make every measure that we possibly can to ensure that these people are, you know, supported, helped and given the best possibility in life. These are the children of our future. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Tinsley.
Thank you, Chair. I hadn't intended to speak, but I've looked at this amendment and it's caused me to get to my feet. Because it's made me quite angry, really, you know? So much of what we do in politics, even at this level, is about what priorities are. And what this amendment says to me is that the priorities of the people putting forward this amendment is not about our children's skills in County Durham. Is it really right that we have a situation that's acceptable, where we have classrooms where it's not possible to take quick fixes such as opening windows and doors? Is that real? 2022, we have a situation like that in County Durham. Now, I think the problem is, what this is symptomatic of is lack of investment in schools and education. Now, we had a programme called Building Skills for the Future under the last Labour government, and that was making real changes to the facilities that we were educated in across England and in County Durham. When I went to school in the 1980s and 90s, the skills hadn't changed in 60, 70 years. It's like when I take my children to Beamish today, there wasn't much difference. There's a dramatic change in the facilities that our children were educated in through the Blair government and beyond that. And that stopped in 2010, when Building Skills for the Future was scrapped. And really, you know, that's why we're in a situation like that today, where we've got classrooms that are too small, classrooms that don't have facilities that children need and classrooms where it is more difficult to teach for teachers. And what's happened with Covid, it's actually brought this into the open and made it really evident. Come on! Schools where windows don't open to ventilate, that's just not acceptable. So I won't be supporting this amendment. I will be supporting councillor Gunn's amendment. And we should be supporting it because the situation existing today is wrong. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Sterling.
Thank you, Chair. Angela Sterling, representing Delve's Lane Division. So I'd like to give my support to the amendments to the motion. I agree that we need clear and consistent national guidelines for the wearing of face masks in schools. Schools have been able to interpret guidelines which not only is difficult for teachers and in particular head teachers, who are pretty much on their knees at the moment, it's very confusing for parents and children, especially where family members attend different schools. People assume that teachers want to wear face masks. I'm a fully qualified teacher of modern foreign languages and mask-wearing when delivering language lessons is absolutely impossible. A huge number of my colleagues would appreciate clear guidance on mask-wearing. And I'd like to turn to the excellent point in the amended motion regarding looking at whether teachers should be given priority status in any future vaccine rollouts. As councillor Bell said, it is extremely well supported by teachers. I think this is a very sensible idea and would very much be welcomed by everyone who works in schools. Previously, the decision has been not to do this and move to allocating vaccinations based on medical need. However, coronavirus has changed and we are now all-minded to consider the spread of the virus and the effect of staff absences on families and children. Children have missed such a lot of their education and we need to minimise this moving forward. Again, using myself as an example, given the nature of my subject. When I teach in school, I teach around 150 children every day. That's 750 different children- That's 750 different children per week. That means that I'm coming into contact with a huge number of people day in, day out, which massively increases the chances of me catching, but crucially, because I'm not concerned about my own health, passing on COVID, and of course, then maybe being absent from school and those hundreds of children-
One minute, Member.
-missing out on their education. Should teachers be given priority for future vaccines, this could be avoided. Therefore, I really encourage everyone to vote for the amended motion.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend.
Thank you. Councillor Samantha Townsend, Shildon and Dean Valley, and ex-teacher, because unfortunately the impact that the Conservative government had on education meant that I wasn't really able to continue in that profession, which I loved, which was a shame. I am speaking against the amendment, which suggests that opening a window is a quick fix that will solve the problem. I suggest councillors Bell and Henderson have never taught a class of 37-year-olds sitting in their courts and shivering, which is the experience of my friends in teaching at the moment. Opening a window is not a quick fix. And I suggest when the government has written off over £4 billion in debts that have accrued over COVID loan fraud, then they can pay for air filtration in our schools to keep our teachers and young people safe. Thank you.
Councillor Malloy.
Thank you, Chair. I too. I wasn't going to speak on this motion either until this amendment came in front of me. I also don't think it's appropriate to allow children, especially in the middle of winter, to sit in a freezing cold classroom with the window open as a quick fix. To me, that is not acceptable. Also, in the original motion, there was no mention of vaccines at all. And I'm pretty concerned about a person's freedom of choice to get a vaccine or not. And will this become mandatory? It doesn't say so. Nothing of getting a vaccine should be mandatory, it should always be a personal choice. During this pandemic, a lot of people have made an elbow lot of money out of this, from pharmaceutical companies to PPE companies, to the point that it's no longer a pandemic, it's a scamdemic. And I will not be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Joplin.
Thank you very much, Chair. I think with this amendment, we are being asked, with the original motion, we are being asked to do something that is not practical. The amendment is infinitely practical. There are schools that even putting the equipment that's being asked for would not suffice. I, you know, think back to the amount of time I've been a councillor, and I think if we hadn't have spent £50 million on a new county hall, that we didn't want £50 million on a new county hall, this council would have been able to have fulfilled its obligation to the schools. Also, I don't know what the Royal Yacht's got to do, actually, with this motion, but if we're bringing up the Royal Yacht, the previous Royal Yacht that we had brought £3 billion worth of trade to this country. And also, as we've gone back to 2010, once again, because they can't get over it, they left the coffers empty. That's why the schools stopped being built. So I'm very, you can laugh, but that happens to be the truth. And the only pleasure you get is out of never putting your hand up to what you've done, you always blame somebody else.
Councillor McKeown.
Thank you. Before I start, I'd like to call for a name vote. Thank you. I believe we have the requisite numbers there. Just to come back a bit on what councillor Joplin said, around the world, actually, Labour leader Gordon Brown was credited with shepherding us and the world through that financial crisis. And actually, it's not the Labour Party that's overseen 11 years of stagnant growth, we are now a low-growth, high-tax economy. And that explains part of why we have to have discussions on motions like this today, because quite frankly, the public realm hasn't functioned properly for 11 years. And quite frankly, I'm quite sick of opposite coming forward and diluting our motions with amendments like this, because quite frankly, this costs us nothing as a council. All we are doing is demanding the absolute best for people in County Durham. Open a window, I'm sorry, I represent a primary school that's in such a windy place, it was the first primary school in the country to get a wind turbine. And you want them to open the windows, and that's how our children are going to learn, in the cold, with our teachers and teaching assistants and support staff in the cold? Go outside, man! It's Durham in January! And this is what you want? All we're asking you to do is write to the Secretary of State. If that's too much for us to ask for, then, well, under the coalition, there really must be problems in our education department, because we never had that lack of capacity when councillor Gunn was in charge. The science shows that air filtration systems have a real impact, that they are the way forward. So why? Why don't we ask for the best for our children and our families and for our schools? We here, we're school governors, we engage with our local schools. When you are voting, and I'm thinking about every person in this room, regardless of whether or not you're part of a coalition or an opposition group, think about not just the kids, but all those people that we serve as governors and as public servants when you make this vote, because that is a disgrace. Thank you.
Councillor Wilson.
Yeah, I think in terms of looking at this, I mean, there's something here which is really, really, it's just bad taste, it's awful. The fact that you're asking kids to sit and open a window in the freezing cold, I mean, let's put this way, if you've seen the reports, that life expectancies in Durham have gone down since this COVID pandemic started, that up here, actually, our health services are worse now because of all this and the strain on them. We are asking people to put themselves at risk of getting further illnesses by opening a window. If you give someone a cold, a flu through that, that's then going to add on to it. Air filtration devices will actually help to improve the atmospheres within schools so that it's healthier and not actually endangering them to such illnesses as flus and colds through cold weather coming through. I'll be voting against this amendment because it's a disgrace.
Councillor Sexton.
Thank you, Chair. Paul Sexton, Chester Street South. Just two points quickly. Firstly, I'll just remind councillor McKeown that Gordon Brown sold off 401 tonnes of our gold reserve at a third of the price, and we've still never recovered from that. Secondly, this debate was never about opening windows or not opening windows. There is a portal there. The local authority, the government, has written to schools and head teachers and said, if you have ventilation issues, there are filtration systems and purifiers available. Yeah? They haven't got a crystal ball. It's down to the schools themselves to go on to the portal and register for a device if they need it. And we've already talked about £4 billion, again councillor McKeown saying £4 billion, no due diligence wasted, et cetera. What if the government were just to go out and spend hundreds of millions of pounds, they arrive at schools and they say, well, actually, we don't need them, we've got plenty of ventilation here? It doesn't fit. So although councillor Gunn's motion is meant well, the amendment puts a bit more beef around it. It's not about our children sitting in schools freezing cold. It's not about that. It's about ventilation and being practical about where we are with the pandemic now. People are vaccinated in the main, others aren't. I get that. Nobody knows more than me what coronavirus can do. But basically, we've got to be practical about this. Going out and spending hundreds of millions of pounds and providing schools with equipment that didn't ask for or didn't want, it's down to the schools to go on and register their interest. 80% of people who have applied have had that fulfilled. Have you actually, in your schools, applied? We had an email from councillor Charlton Lane, a very impassioned email-
One minute, Member.
... about her anxiety about her particular classroom, which does alarm me. And I'm not sure if she's heard the day, but I'm happy to contribute out of my neighbourhood budget, if that is allowed, to purchase a Dyson air purifier for that classroom, if she would like to take me up on it. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Hunt.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Sexton's covered everything I wanted to say. It was purely just to say that this actually offers more to schools and teachers than the first motion. Thank you.
Councillor Holmes.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Holmes of the Spennymo Division. I'm going to be very brief. Councillor McKeown says, or she asks, if it's too much for the council to write to the Secretary of State. Well, the simple response to that is no, it's not, hence why the amendment says we're going to write to the Secretary of State for Education. Secondly, she brings up the subject of the economy. I just want to clarify that under this Conservative government, the UK has the fastest-growing economy in the G7. And as other colleagues have said, including councillor Hunt just there, this amendment actually brings more to the table. It considers whether teachers should be given priority status alongside other key workers in the vaccine rollout. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Armrod.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, well, likewise, councillor Sexton said most of what I wanted to say, but I'm very happy to support the amendment. It's a very sensible amendment. Surely it makes sense to target the support where it's needed, rather than a one-size-fits-all solution. Thank you.
Councillor Keir.
Chair, I wasn't going to speak at all, but I'll be brief. There's some political points being made that I have to counter. Councillor Joplin, the credit crunch of 2008, was that just something that happened to other people? Do you remember that? Do you remember that? And do you remember how Gordon Brown was lauded the world over for his response to it, how he kept the UK shielded from the worst of what happened with the subprime USA mortgage market, where it all started? 2010, when the Tory Lib Dem coalition came to power, were you an independent then or were you a Lib Dem? You certainly were a Tory, and I think we're the only party you've never been a member of, so I'll take it from there. It'll be one or the other, won't it? It'll be one or the other.
Schools, please.
The story never happened. Never happened in your household, did it not? Finally, councillor Sexton, £37 billion for test and trace, track and trace, do you remember that? Wasn't that long ago? £37 billion, and then Jackson. So don't lecture us on the economy, because you don't know what you're talking about.
Point of order here. Yes, keep to the script, keep to schools, please. Councillor Wilkes.
This has been going on for a while, I'd forgotten I'd even pressed the button. It was councillor Tinsley that actually made me press the button after he said that he wasn't going to speak either. And he mentioned about the past and about things like building schools for the future. And I know that County Durham waited a long time before the county council actually even joined the Building Schools for the Future programme. And the reality is that we've had decades of the previous Labour administration here, top-slicing money that's provided from the government to repair schools as profit of up to 20% and putting it into reserves and then spending it on other things or leaving it there. And many of the windows in schools in this county are still single-glazed and haven't been replaced because successive governments of all persuasion and this council haven't invested enough into our school buildings. We should all be calling for more investment into our schools, and we must all agree with that. But as far as I can see, the amendment here is asking for that, it's actually asking for an awful lot more than the original motion. And so I would suggest that what we're doing here is adding to what councillor Gunn's motion says and putting to government, we want an awful lot more than what councillor Gunn's motion is saying. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Callett.
Thank you, Chair. It's a question really of the deputy monitoring officer. Is section C not a separate motion and not an amendment? It's talking about the vaccine, whereas the substance of the motion, the original one, is about ventilation and air and nothing to do with vaccination. I think one or two members opposite have already pointed that out, but I would like to say this is a separate motion and not an amendment.
Chair, if I could just advise the meeting through you that the amendment is being checked against the relevant procedures in development rules in the council procedure rules. It is a valid amendment in that it opts to leave words out and add words in and does not negate the thrust of the original motion. So I can assure councillor Callett that it's a perfectly valid amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Gunn, you have the right to reply before we go to the vote. Just before you do, councillor Gunn, point, what's this? Sorry? You're not registered? Okay, we'll let you speak, and then we'll go to councillor Gunn.
Yeah, councillor McLean, Hawdon Division. I won't be supporting this amendment. Where quick fixes to improve ventilation are not possible, I think that's a bit of an insult, that. What I want to do is, I've just been looking through Ayton School's website, Ayton School, Boris Johnson went-
Ayton School, Boris Johnson went there, Richard Bell's colleague. Ayton School, it states in there, on their website, each classroom has its own portable air purifier. If Ayton School can have its own portable air purifier, why can't my kids have their own portable air purifier in the classroom? I'll be voting against this.
councillor Gunn
Thank you, Chair, and I thank councillor Bell for this amendment. But I have to say that I think this is the worst Tory coalition amendment I've ever seen put in all of the Labour motions we've brought to this council. It's an amendment that's like slapping an elastoplast on a major wound. It's pathetic in the way in which it dilutes what is a very serious issue around having proper ventilation in our classrooms, in all of our schools in this county. It seriously dismisses protecting our children and our staff. And it flies in the face of all of the things that some of your councillors over on that side here have said about their commitment. It flies in the face of it because it doesn't actually say anything except quick fixes, improving, where quick fixes can improve ventilation. There are so many speakers on this side of this room who have made really, really good contributions to this debate. I'll just answer councillor Joplin, because there were several speakers who frankly, I just thought, this contributes nothing to the debate. But that was, I think you said, councillor Joplin, it's not practical, but you didn't actually say why it wasn't practical. Well, I think it's probably a lot more practical than what's already been mentioned by my colleague, than test and trace, the costing of which was £37 billion. An eye-watering staggering investment of taxpayers' money, which failed. This is not going to fail our children. This is going to improve their opportunities to attend school and to be healthy.
One minute, members.
That's what this is about, Chair. And I really, truly hope that every councillor in this room will show their commitment to our teachers and to our children and to their families by voting for this motion without this amendment. This amendment is absolutely pathetic. Thank you, Chair.
Right, members, thank you. We'll go to the vote. I'll pass over to our member here.
Thank you, Chair. So we'll now take a vote on the amendment as moved by councillor Bell. One to vote for the amendment, two to vote against the amendment, and three to abstain. And the voting's open. Yes, apologies, councillor, that will be factored in. So yes, it is a named vote. The names and which way people voted will appear in the minutes. Thank you. Is councillor Vardy in the room still?
The vote is now closed, members. Right, members, the motion, amendment 48, against 52. Abstentions, one. The amendment is rejected. councillor Joplin? No? No members ready. Councillor Gunn, you have the right to reply again.
Me? Yes, thank you. I don't want to add to the time. I want to thank all of the speakers actually who have contributed to the debate. And I particularly obviously want to thank those who rejected this amendment. It's the right thing to do to protect our children and our staff and our communities as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Go to the vote, members. councillor Wilkes, point of order?
Could I just seek clarity that we've already extended standing orders for the length of the meeting? Because it's now gone past half past 12 and the vote wouldn't be legitimate.
Chair, the two-and-a-half-hour limit is not a hard-edged limit. So once the two-and-a-half-hour limit is reached, you conclude the debate on the item in question. And then every other item after that, well, there aren't any other items after that today, are moved and seconded without discussion. So you still go through every item that remains to be on the agenda. So as we were in this debate, when the clock reached two-and-a-half hours, we continue with the debate until its conclusion.
Can you wait? Point of order, is it?
Hello. Chair, in standing orders, is it possible to vote for an amendment that has then become a substantive motion if you didn't vote on the amendment? I.e., perhaps you left the room to go to the toilet or something like that?
Yes. Any member that's in the room at the time is entitled to vote on any motion that is before the council at that time.
So we go to the, a point of order, is it then, member?
Yeah, and I was stood up before. I just want to ask for a named vote on this vote, please.
A named vote. Okay, it's a named vote. Can we go to the vote, please? I'll pass over to our legal officer.
Thank you, Chair. It's, we're now voting on the substantive motion as set out in the agenda, moved by councillor Gunn. One to vote for that motion, two to vote against that motion, three to abstain. And like the amendment, this is a recorded vote. Thank you. And the vote is open.
Members, the vote is closed. Members, the vote is as follows. Four seventy-eight, against eight. Abstentions sixteen. The motion is carried. Members, that brings us to item number fifteen, questions from members. No questions have been submitted for today's meeting. So, members, that concludes today's business. Before the meeting finishes, I would like to thank everyone for taking part and those members of the public and media who have watched this meeting. Thank you for your attendance. The hall is now going to be emptied one row at a time. You will be asked to exit the hall in a safe and considered way. It might be helpful if you could please leave your handset and registration card on your table. These will be collected back in once everyone has...